We're right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's city council meeting to order. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hossnack.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I am gonna make a suggestion to the planned agenda as printed, just a slight modification. And this was a mistake that I should've caught earlier. I think we want open forum to be our next item on the agenda prior to the presentation about the downtown stormwater management project. We have some folks here that want to provide some input, I believe, on that project. And I want to hear that input. I want council to have that as context before we hear the presentation. And so with that, I would move that council approve the agenda with the change of moving item number six above the open forum, above the presentation of information for the downtown stormwater project.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve. And the mo- oppose. And the motion is approved. Agenda's approved. Sorry about that. Alright, so with that, we're gonna move into open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to address council on any topic of your choice. If you are here to speak on an individual topic, want to address council, this is your chance to do so. Once we move into the planned discussion item, there isn't going to be a public hearing portion of that. I wanted to get open forum first, so we can have kind of a list of your concerns, and you have an opportunity to be heard. And then we'll bring it back for kind of council's consideration at our agenda item. If you've signed up, great. Happy to hear from you. If you haven't yet signed up and want to speak, after we've gone through the list, we'll open it up to anyone else that wants to speak. So, we're glad you're here. We want to hear from you. First on open forum is Jason Seering, and as your name is called. If you could, just come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jason Seering. I live at 7323 233rd Street North. My family lives right there on the corner of 233rd Street North and North Shore Trail. And I'm here to share my disappointment with the way the Forest Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, I think also called the Downtowner Stormwater Management Plan, has been executed. So first and foremost, there was a lack of early communication with residents regarding this project. This project has been in the works for over a year, and many of us were made aware a mere two months before its start, often finding out first from utility contractors. This has left us with insufficient time to prepare or voice our concerns. Equally concerning is the fact that residents were not given a platform to weigh in on the project's potential impact on their property. The project fundamentally affected the safety and usage of my property and had a detrimental effect on its value. Per a couple realtors, up to $50,000 to $100,000 of property value reduction. We have kids, older family members, and others that now have to be on North Shore Trail about 50% longer because we can't cross directly to our lake lot across the street like we used to. We deserve that opportunity to provide input and influence the decisions that would so profoundly affect our families. Furthermore, the communication surrounding the project has been riddled with inaccuracies. In my meetings with Tim Olson from Bolton and Mink, I was given misleading descriptions of the project, including its size, final appearance, drainage to the lake. I was told the basin near my property needed to be so large because it drains directly to the lake via a culvert. That is not true. There is no culvert there. I have now been told that it runs north and then into a culvert into the lake. That also is not accurate. That culvert and ditch to the lake has not carried water in the six years we have lived there because the grade and maintenance in that area doesn't allow it. Almost all the water from our large basin already runs into an existing wetland. That's real-life water, how it flows regardless of what the model says. There is no reason for the size of the project near my house. Moreover, communication to the city council on May 22nd seemed to provide an inaccurate picture of the project's scope, despite questions raised by various council members. The presentation to the council described it as, quote, "shallow depressions for stormwater detention," close quote. If you look at, I think there was a handout that was given before the meeting, you'll see a picture in there. I think it's page two.
Is this from you?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And you can see a picture of the basin in my property. You can see there's my seventh-grade daughters are both standing there as kind of reference. You know, I think you'd be hard-pressed to call that a shallow depression. That is bigger than my daughters who are fairly tall. And you can see the size of that. To call that a shallow depression, in my mind, is completely inaccurate. You can also see on page three is also a reference to the slide that was shared with the city council that showed that culvert. It's the red line. The southern red line is my property. That shows it running. That basin, that culvert does not exist in any way either. So, again, that was, again, the reason I was told that mine was so big. Also, there's no appearance maintenance plant for the project. The sod at my property covers steep grades, which is impractical to mow, leading to concerns about long-term care and appearances. I was told most of the project would be mowable and the city would take care of it. That also now appears to be not true. So first, finally, I must express my concern that this project appears to be primarily driven by the pursuit of credits to benefit developers for downtown redevelopment. Vibrant downtown is undoubtedly great for the entire city. Fully support it. But it should not come at the expense of a few residents who are directly affected by this project. In conclusion, I urge the city council to reevaluate the way this project has been handled and consider the concerns and grievances of the affected residents. Hopefully, some action can be taken to make this right, and common sense will prevail. I do understand this is a right-away project, but just because the city has the right to do something, it does not mean it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is it Pam Chell? If I mispronounce your name, my apologies.
My name is stated as Pam Chell, and I live at 7480 North Shore Trail. I live just a few homes down from Jason, and we were literally blindsided by this project. None of us were notified or able to speak in or have any input into this project because we didn't even know it was gonna happen. And what has happened to our properties has made me so sad. And the look of North Shore Trail has gravely changed. I've sent pictures to all of your emails. More pictures this afternoon. It's just appalling. And the depth of the cavern in our yard is dangerous. Somebody will be killed, or a kid could drown in that thing. My niece drove up the driveway. Her little girl ran out of the van, ran to the culvert that was now filled about four feet deep. And she goes, "Lucy, Lucy, get away from there. That's dangerous." Many people have stopped and said it's dangerous. We've had neighbors call us and say, "I am very concerned about my little boy, and he could get hurt in that place." When Tim Olson, who's the engineer of this project, came out, my husband asked him, "Tim, let me ask you, how would your wife like this in your property?" And he said, "Well, she wouldn't." Well, either do we. We have now these very, very deep caverns that aren't necessary at all to be of that depth. Not only that, we never had water lay on our beautiful grass, never. But any water that would be filtered down through there is now going down into the lake where it's filled on our neighbor's property with tons of reeds, tons of phosphorus, and methane gas. It's been like, literally like a pus hole for years. So now we're gonna supposedly filter rainwater and have it go into the pus hole. And so my husband took Tim Olson down there, of which he had nothing to say, because what can you say? It's not gonna do anything. When I tried to call on this project, I called Watershed. Nobody had any idea about this project. Talked to several people. They said, "Call the city." Many people honestly say, "Well, we don't know about that project. It's not listed. We've never heard of it." Finally, I got to one person that said, "Well, you need to go to the city council or the mayor, and that's why I'm here tonight." As Jason has stated, our properties are devalued. There's no doubt about it. And thinking of selling our house, we're gonna have to have somebody come that doesn't have children or doesn't mind the liability that a kid could fall in this deep hole. My husband can't mow around it because the lawnmower with him will ride right down in it. So he has to now weed whip all around that before he can mow our lawn. So it's added a lot of extra care for us. And I really want to know, what is the city council gonna do? Because you signed off on something without realizing what was happening to us as people, landowners, in our city. We've been here almost 50 years. And you should've looked at the massiveness of this, of the plans, and what this was gonna entail, and what this was gonna do. I rode by Dale Dahlbeck's just a couple hours before I came here. It's just appalling. He's lost everything, everything that would've been coverage of giving him any kind of privacy whatsoever. It's a mess. And I just feel very sad that all of you didn't look deeper into this because if your property number would've been listed as one gonna be affected, maybe you would've looked in a little deeper. And I just want to know what this city is gonna do for us that have been this affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Chell.
Welcome. Hello. My name is Tom Chell. I live at 7480 North Shore Trail. And I'm discussing the issue that we've been discussing. I was disappointed, well, we've been very upset about this project. But I discovered it in April, first week of April, when XL Energy was marking this black walnut tree to cut down because they were supposed to move a telephone pole where the black walnut tree was. So XL Energy told me about this project. I then came to the office, right here at the door, and the guy said, "There's no project going on." This was in April. No, he took me in, brought photographs of my property. "No, there's no project." And we called Lake. He said, "You can call Watershed." Called Watershed. "No, there's no project going on." This was in April. This was presented to this board a year ago. So, you know, it looks pretty deceptive. It's just like, what? No one's telling us? So I got on the phone. I called Tim Olson, Isaiah from Bolton Mink. I've got the plans here for it. What's disturbing to me is the depth of this thing. Tim Olson came out. They've been very, Tim and Isaiah have been very gracious. They've talked to me. They've come out. He said, "It's only going down three feet." I've got pictures right now that I took elevation. This is supposed to go from 917 down to 914. That's three feet. I got pictures 912, which is two feet lower than 914, and it's still another foot and a half deeper than that. And Tim says, "Oh, you can mow it. We don't want you to, but you can mow it." You know, I expected a gradual, it's a V. So the north end of it, I ran a tape from 917, where they cut my sod, that's where the stake was, to the road. Now, I know the road is lower than 917, so I just, okay, so my data is inaccurate. It's actually worse than what I'm saying. But on the north end, it's 43 inches down. Well, 43 inches is more than three feet. On the south end, it's 53 inches down, from a straight line from 917 to the road, and that's a slant. I guess, if it was even close, I would like to see, and I've talked to the contractor, and they have to do what the plan, but they're way below the 914 elevation. Today, they put in two stakes, 912 and 915. 915 is about that far below the road surface, so 914 would be another foot. That would be reasonable. I could mow that. But right now, and I've heard from the city, the workers for the city, who's gonna take care of this? And everyone wants the backpedal. No one wants to take care of it. You can't take care of it. I can't. It's a deep hole, and you know that our prevailing wind is westerly, northwest, west. And so all the leaves across the lake, across the street, are gonna blow from the west wind into this thing. And in the past, it'd blow into my yard, and I'd mow it because it was flat. I can't mow this now. It's too dangerous, and it's too steep. If they brought it up to 914, if they brought it up to even a foot higher than that, so it'd be a gra- it's wide enough. They went down four feet and put a drain tile with sand. It's all clay out there, so I understand. Water doesn't go through clay. But they put sand in. They put a drain tile. That's good. They could put more sand in, put a nice swash, so I could mow it, and then I would take care of it. I would take care of the leaves. Right now, I can't do it. And right now, it's filling up with leaves. I can't. I don't want to walk down there. You know, it's kind of, it's full of water now, but I can't maintain it. I'm saying, if it was brought up to 914 or higher, to what the plan says, and a gradual, instead of a sharp V, then I could run perpendicular to it. I can't run sideways, parallel to it, because I'll tip over. I've run to the edge of just about tipping over. I know how far I can go. Another thing that concerns me is people have walked down the road, people I don't know, and they stop and they ask me about this, and they say, "That's dangerous. Somebody's gonna get hurt." And I'm going, "You know, they're joke you public. And if they think that, if somebody actually gets hurt," and my biggest concern is the people. Two people have called me with concerns of little kids going in there if the water's deep. Right now, the water, and Jason showed pictures of his girls in there. This thing, if I were to stand in there, it'd be this deep, okay? If a kid fell in there and drowned, I know the city would be liable, the contractor would be liable, and Bolton Mink would be liable for building this thing, for designing it. It's not safe. This totally could be accomplished by just having a gradual sway with sand, drain tile can go through the sand. The same thing could be done. It just doesn't have to be as deep. Then I could mow it. It wouldn't be danger for little kids. That's my concern. I mean, you're the ones that are responsible if somebody were to get sued. But I think it's just foolish to have something that dangerous, see? And if it was even brought up to the plan, 914. 915 is about that far below the road. 914 would be another foot. You could put a gradual sway to that. I could mow it perpendicular to the road. It'd be safe to mow. The city wouldn't have to take care of the leaves in there. It would solve everything. That's what I would request, is that it be brought up to the level it's supposed to be, and even higher, so that it's safe to mow. That's what I would love to see. That's what I would appreciate if the city and the contractors could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Blake Dahlbeck.
I'm gonna give you guys a couple pictures. If you haven't seen, I think a couple of you guys have. And I'd like to echo what Pam and Jason and Tom just said.
Blake, can you just have your address for the record, please?
Oh, yeah. Blake Dahlbeck, 23020 Hayward Avenue North. So I'm actually surprised that this has gotten where it's at with how deep it is in our yard. Granted, it is your guys' property in that easement, but if you see how deep it is there in some of them pictures, it is way too steep, and I don't even know how that road is gonna hold up with the erosion there. So, back to echoing with what they're saying, there's nothing we could do or say about this project. They came here, said, "This is what we're gonna do." You have nothing to say. On top of that, Bolton and Mink has not been truthful. So I talked to a guy from there, and I said, "What's the deepest spot of our yard?" And he said, "It's gonna be four and a half feet." So I called him up last week, and I got him out there, and it was seven feet, and they're putting 18 inches in. So I said, "Why did you say it was four and a half feet when clearly, right now, you measured it and it's five and a half feet?" And he apologized and said, "Sorry, it is actually five and a half feet." Our ditch is way too steep. I mean, if you guys go take a look at that, what they're saying with any kids that fall in, we got a nine, seven, and five-year-old. They're playing soccer, and the ball goes, and then there's water in there. They're not gonna get out of there. Not to mention, being on that corner, we have 10 cars a year, every winter, that go in. It's gonna be a lot more damage and possibly a lot more injuries with it being that deep. Not to mention a major eyesore out there. So I think it's our main pond up front that's five and a half feet deep. I think that is just way too unsafe. That cannot be that deep. We could have this project be probably 60% less of what it is to do the same amount that it's doing. Obviously, you guys are doing it for new development up in town, but I just think it's way more than what we ever needed to have out there. Another thing, they cut the power to the lake. Granted, that's my fault, but it's a $500 deal. It's like, they called me up and said, "Blake, recover your power. Find an electrician." It's like, it's 500 bucks. Cut the power, you're destroying the looks of our whole yard. Can you not plug the power back in? So, I think they've pretty much touched on everything else, so it's just a couple of ones I wanted to bring up.
I just said, "Thank you for being here." Aaron Meyer.
Good evening. Aaron Meyer. I live at 7363 233rd Street North, Forest Lake. I've sort of been there just over seven years. So unfortunately, we're here far too long after. Much of the damage has been done. Some of these guys had my mind thinking, so I wrote a bunch of stuff down. I first heard about it from Medco, marking off a bunch of stuff in my yard, in my yard, asking him who he is, why is he in my yard, which they can do so, which he had no idea what he was even doing, just marking stuff off. I followed the leads, and then I, when I did look into it, I was assured that it wouldn't affect my property. And shame on me. I was selfish. I disregarded it. Didn't affect me. They weren't doing my yard. I had no idea what they were doing, but I shut it off. Thank goodness they're not affecting my yard. But they did, because they did affect my property. They affected my friends, my neighbors, and ultimately affect my property value as well drastically. And not to be selfish again, but it does. When both sides of my main strip there are hit by, I'd say easily $100,000. Blake's and Seering's on the end, it's ridiculous. They took 60, using a number that Blake said, 60%. They took 60% of their backyard. And they're on a hill, too, already. It's sloped. And it's, I don't know if you're aware, you could pull this up really quick, pretty high taxes. We pay a lot. We save a little bit of money, but not anymore. I used to save money on two PIDs having the split there between the road. Not anymore. It went up 84%. Then it went up another 20%, then another 30%. So we pay a lot of money, and not to be privileged, but it's a fact, okay? So, you know, I had some questions. Is there anybody from the Watershed here? Because I was told that they're driving this. Anyone here from the Watershed? I don't know who else here. I know a couple of you guys, but nobody?
We can adjust this tomorrow when we get into the presentation, but...
I don't understand even what the point was. There's never been standing water. There was a little bit in my yard, which I corrected myself, but there's never been drainage there. I just don't comprehend it. I'm not with the Watershed. I'm not with the city. It's above my pay grade, but I don't really comprehend it. Currently, there's a lot of water, biting my tongue on swearing too much, but there's a lot of water. It's just sitting there in these holding ponds, which I thought it was gonna be drainage. I just don't comprehend the project whatsoever. I don't understand what the point was. It's not doing anything. It's unnecessary. I'd like to know what the budget was. I'd like to know what has been currently spent. Are they under budget? Are they over budget? Because budgets tend to go over. Sure you guys know that well. And that's pretty much summing it up. So it's, I know, I believe Blake and Leif have driven by there. I don't know if you've been by there at all. You can see the pictures. I have to imagine and hope that it's not done, but I don't really see current, like, project specs, how it could possibly be any better. And then to hear that this is somehow potentially tied with something downtown, that's a little eyebrow raising. Really curious to hear more about that. So, there's my 15 cents. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Is it Brian Tilton?
It's me. I guess I didn't know that's what I was signing up for. I thought I was signing up for your events, but I will. I just, I'll make this quick.
If you'd like to speak, you're welcome to.
Otherwise, I was just signing my name for... Brian Tilton, 7401 North Shore Trail North. I live in the area, and I know Blake, but I don't know the rest of them, but I feel sorry for them. Being that I live right there, I know how fast cars drive on that road. And my biggest question is liability. This is a man-made thing by approval of two different groups, what I understand, just from what I hear, and that's your group and the Watershed. Somebody is gonna get hurt, and I'm not talking by just drowning or anything else. By the speed of vehicles and the depth of what I've seen along that road, in the winter, I'm not talking somewhere, I'm talking in the winter, someone's gonna get hurt, and you guys gotta answer to that. That's your problem, not mine. But I do pay the taxes. I cover that insurance. That's my concern.
Understood. Thank you for being here. That's the end of those that have signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic or anything else? Please. If you could, just start with your name and address.
Leslie Dahlbeck, 23020 Hayward Avenue North. I don't like public speaking, but this is a big deal. Like everyone else has said, and I've watched these projects from the beginning, out my window, you know, digging a hole, and then it never stops. Like, it just kept getting deeper. Like Blake said, we have young kids. They've kind of taken away any sense of security. I mean, here we have this big hole in front of the road, which some people would find comforting, maybe, because it's separating the street. But really, it's just created a whole bunch of new problems. And the Watershed district that is supposedly passed this or brought this to you guys, you know, our concern is that this, that group is unelected officials, right? Like, they just, who do they report to? Can they just say, like, "Hey, you have a lot of yard. It's gonna fit our bill." It's gonna make us, it's gonna give us what we need to do something somewhere else. I don't see how that's right, ethical, or any of that. If they would've brought it, I mean, my, we've only been there for a year. So, for one, you know, we move into a house that is everything we wanted, and then all of a sudden, we're hit with this. And I know for a fact that if this had been presented to my father-in-law, it would not have gone. It would not have, it would not have worked. So knowing that it was not even brought to his attention a year ago is just super upsetting and to all the other homeowners that didn't get a chance to vote in on something that was gonna affect them to this magnitude. I think somebody needs to at least be honest or straightforward about how that happened, and so it doesn't happen to other homeowners in the area. So, that's all.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else that would like to speak?
I've already did. Can I add something?
Yes, happy to, but can you come to the podium, just so you're on mic?
Do you want to say my name again?
Mr. Meyer.
My last question would be, because I don't know if anybody's really asked this, is it too late to go back? What can we do about this? I can fill this with dirt myself. I would happily go pick up a few loads of dirt and pay for it myself out of pocket because it'd be pennies on the dollar. And when I said $100,000, I meant per property. We're way over $0.5 million in damage. And again, I want the number. I didn't find out because I wasn't involved in the project technically, but I would like a number on what's spent. Because when I see six people on my way to school standing around with signs, which is a common, like, kind of derogatory term for people doing construction, but that's what's happening. There's six people standing around, and there's one guy working the machine. It's gotta be just hundreds of thousands of dollars in work that's been done. I would assume it's way over $1 million. I know how it works, so that's all.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic or any other topic? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic or any other topic? All right, with that, we will close open forum and bring agenda back to council. Um, and our first item, um, is kind of a presentation and further discussion about downtown, the downtown stormwater project. Um, I think we're going to hear first a presentation, kind of an update from, um, Ryan, are you kicking us off perhaps? Tim from Bolton and Mank is here, um, and can kind of walk us through first a kind of a presentation, maybe kind of level set, get some base questions answered and then from there we can kind of have some additional conversation. Just to set expectations, we aren't planning on taking additional, um, kind of public comment at this point. Um, if I, I hate leaving questions unanswered and so I'm, if I sense that there's some growing questions, I might move from that, but let's try to just have a civil conversation and get as, explore as much as we're able to this evening. So with that, Tim, I'm glad you're here, if you could maybe get started.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. Uh, Tim Olson, Water Resources Engineer. Um, I will go through this presentation relatively quickly, um, because some of it is repeat, like give an update on where we're at with construction and so on, but, uh, really do wanna get to the, the open discussion. I hope to be able to address as many questions as I can tonight. Yeah. Make sure it comes up here, there we go. Um, so some, some of these slides may look familiar. Um, I, I do wanna just, you know, kind of expand on some of the language that we used earlier on. Um, this project is, you know, tied to a downtown stormwater management plan that was completed in late twenty-one. Um, we started construction plans for the project soon thereafter. Really, the, the entire project is to support economic development in the downtown corridor through stormwater management. Um, we studied numerous locations around the lake to, to mitigate that, those stormwater management requirements in the downtown area. Um, and this was the site that was selected through, um, both council and in conversation with Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District.
Can I pause you, can I pause you there? Cause one of the, I think one of the foundational questions is how did this start? And I think there's some question on, is this a Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District sponsored project? Is it a City of Forest Lake sponsored project? And I just wanna clarify, uh, what, how would you classify that relationship? I have my, I wanna hear it from you, I have my-
This is, this is a unique project for the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District and for the City of Forest Lake. Um, since I've started working here, um, on behalf of my consulting firm, we've been looking for opportunities for regional stormwater management.
And that's a city identified challenge and I, 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 just from a where did this start, um, kind of who's responsible? I looked to a city council and our EDA as like, kind of the, this is, that's where the conversation started. Um, and it started at the EDA level as well with the thought of, it was a barrier to redevelopment to downtown. Um, and we need some regional solutions rather than having individual properties having to do their own stormwater management. So there was that, that's where it started and I just wanna be transparent on where it started. Um, I, there is a partnership with the watershed district, but I don't want there to be that, the, that they have inflicted this upon us. This is, I think initiated by the city and I think we should own that, but-
Can I just comment on that? Um, I, you know, maybe I haven't seen this wrong, but these requirements are driven by the watershed district. These are for development, you have to have this, this is part of it.
A hundred percent, correct.
So, yes, the city, it's their, our project, but it is the watershed district and my understanding is, which is much more difficult to work with than say Rice Creek, but this is this current watershed district and that board of managers who is really driving this. And so I think there's some ownership there, but we're just trying to abide with what the requirements are to do any development, whether it's downtown or anywhere in Forest Lake.
That is a, that is also a good perspective, is that the individ, in absence of a regional solution, the individual requirements would go to individual property owners to meet those water quality standards or water treatment standards?
That is correct. It's especially challenging too in the downtown corridor where you have zero setback requirements, um, or the setback requirements are zero, so you don't have to have setbacks and there is no limit on impervious area construction. So it, to trigger that five thousand square foot rule that the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed has, uh, it doesn't take much. Um, you know, and we're looking at around six acres of total high priority redevelopment in the downtown area.
Just, if I could, just a little bit more context on how we get here in absence of that, you end up with individual properties doing their own management. And we have identified as a challenge that we have literally hundreds of individual ponds that are typically poorly maintained, there's a lot of them, there's always the question of whether it's city maintained, individual property owner maintained. And while that's possible outside of a downtown core, we've also identified that it's one of the things that we as a city can do is to create a broader solution. Now, clearly, execution's a different thing and I appreciate there's those in the room tonight that are frustrated with our execution, but it has been a strategy of one of the things the city can do is we should take a regional approach rather than individual property owners having to meet those requirements to Councilmember Roberts, you know, um, point, it's the requirements of the watershed district. So I just don't want there to be a, uh, I wanna be clear on where this came from, so.
Yes. Any other questions on that? Okay. Um, so the, we worked through that memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District essentially to bank those credits that are being built um, with this water quality project. Um, those would then get sold back to the developer as the development occurs. The city made a conscious decision in this case to build this entire project, um, out ahead of development as, hopefully as a catalyst, um, with repayment later on as development occurs. So I just wanted to mention that. Um, we are in the process of finalizing that maintenance plan. I'll talk a little bit more about maintenance here in just a second. Uh, there, there has been a lot of great feedback, um, from the residents on communication and we did make a decision early on to have that communication, um, in the field before construction started. Um, and then the utility companies came out to mark those and, and we were in the field uh, having those conversations with the residents soon thereafter. Um, it, it did not happen before the utilities were, were marked. I understand that. Um, we began to meet with the residents, you know, ahead of construction and have tried to be, you know, as engaging as possible, uh, through both our construction representative and, and myself to be available when I can. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that, we can certainly come back to communication. Um, so just a construction update, there have been numerous delays, I wanna talk a little bit about those. Um, the, of course, all the rain, you know, for the entire summer comes when construction is open. So, um, you know, the city saw around five inches of rain or so in a week, which was challenging. Um, the, the basin in front of the Chels, number five, um, did not get connected to the downstream structure before the rain because of an unknown gas service. Um, the gas service was slated to be relocated the week that the rain came and so that was delayed about another week. Um, I talked to Tom on the phone about that, uh, basin and we got the contractor out there to draw it down. They've been pumping since, um, to make sure it stays dry, understanding that that's a hazard. That is not the permanent solution. The drain tile needs, will be connected to the structure and it will draw down much faster. The utility relocates are mostly complete. I, I did, uh, understand that the gas main was relocated today. Um, the final utilities on the south side of two thirty-third, Jason's property, um, is, uh, is, that, that, um, coordination is gonna happen tomorrow, so I can give some updates on that, um, when we know more from the utility company. Uh, Chad Quigley's been doing a lot of communication with the utilities there. Um, I use the term shallow, uh, and the reality is, is that we are looking at basin depths in the five, the half a foot range to about six feet range, um, and maybe even a little bit deeper in some spots. Now, what we, what I look at from a depth perspective, um, is really the depth to the outlet. Uh, and on Mr. Dahlbeck's property, I understand that, um, we've got about a three or four foot depth at the overflow. Um, in Tom's property, the, the depth actually at the nine fourteen contour will only really bounce about a half a foot to overtop that berm. Um, and so there, there's some additional survey verification that we have to complete to make sure that those basins were constructed properly. If they are two feet low, if they are constructed at steeper than three to one side slopes, then those need to be corrected by the contractor. That, that survey verification has not happened yet. Uh, we typically wait till the end of construction, however, there are some features that are essentially complete that we can go out and, and have surveyed right away. Uh, well, especially while the construct, construct, can, can, huh, the contractor is still on site. So that, that, that validation survey, that as-built survey will happen, um, before the contractor leaves. So all of those slopes will be verified.
Can you help us on just, um, the optics of what a two to one or a three to one slope is going to look like? I, I, I understand what the math is, but help us on, so I'm, I'm looking in particular, one of the pictures that was sent to, that was provided to, to us as part of the open forum was, you know, the, the picture with the seventh graders.
Yeah.
Is that, is that what a three to one is, given the, the size? Or, um, do you have, as you look at that, do you have concerns that we are maybe outside of what was planned? I, I'm just trying to get a practical of, a kind of application of, are, are we leaning towards this as outside of design or is it that when council approved that as a spec, council didn't know what we were approving? I'm just trying to-
Yeah, I appreciate the question. Um, and, you know, in, in industry, when we grade things at four to ones or three to one slopes are generally, um, referred to as maintainable. Uh, the validation survey will tell the story about whether or not the slopes were constructed to grade, to the grade that they were supposed to be.
Okay.
Um, if we wanna talk about some solutions later on, we can certainly do that, but that, that validation survey, that as-built survey will tell the whole story. So I don't, I don't, I'd rather not speculate until we know that, um, but that, that is an important step.
Would the expectation generally be, be based on the usual standard that you should be able to mow it without concern of tipping over and, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Questions so far in council, please pepper in as, as we go here, if you have anything. Okay.
Okay.
Continue on.
So, uh, just an update on construction, uh, I'd actually covered some of this already. The tile and basin five will be connected. Um, we talked about some delays in, in, uh, construction start times with some of the structure ordering. Um, we've worked through that with the contractor. Um, we did convert all seed to sod in locations where there was sod before. The bottoms of those features will have a native, native seed mix. In fact, there's a, kind of an example picture here of what a full native seed basin would look like. This is a bio retention facility along a roadway. Um, these are the types of plants we would expect in the spring. Um, with sod on the sides all the way down to the, basically to the bottom of the, of the basin.
Um, I don't know if you have this data point now, but while you're on this slide, you mentioned that you're finding that some of, there will be sections that are closer to five and a half feet deep. Is that one section, like of the percentage, like how would you, I, like, how would you, how are you expecting those final depths to play out?
Yeah.
I'm trying to gauge, is this a lot, is this one problematic area that we might need to address or is it that we've got six foot sections for, you know, twenty continuous feet?
I, I think that'll be, uh, uh, the topic of conversation.
Okay.
You know, how, how, um, how do those, what do those fixes look like? What do they mean from the downtown redevelopment perspective? And, and certainly what do they mean from the resident's perspective? Um, and so I, you know, I, I assume we, we talk, we talk about that here, uh, later on, so we can maybe bring that up again.
Perfect.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, yeah, I think I went through this too. So maintenance planning. Um, the City of Forest Lake has an MS four permit or municipal separate storm sewer system permit, um, that requires them to inspect and maintain their stormwater facilities. Um, the city has to show documentation to the MPCA, uh, during an audit, uh, during an MS four program audit. Those happen once per permit cycle. Um, so the City of Forest Lake will be going through one of those relatively soon, I would say in the next year or two. The Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District requires maintenance declarations for public and private best management practices. The City of Forest Lake has a programmatic agreement with the watershed district, so it's one agreement for all of your BMPs to be maintained in, within the watershed district that were there for a permit. On the private side, individual maintenance declarations have to happen with each BMP, with each practice that's constructed. It, it kind of makes this circumstance and the agreement that the city is in with the watershed district a little different than normal because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, a practice in public right of way, but for essentially private redevelopment use. So part of the reason why that maintenance declar, excuse me, maintenance declaration hasn't been signed yet or hasn't been validated yet is because we don't have the as-built survey number one, so we don't know the credits, the, the total credits being constructed. Um, and number two, we worked through that with the watershed district too, you know, to, to discuss maintenance, um, once the, once the project was complete. But I think it's important to just note that both the City of, of Forest Lake has a, a permit to discharge stormwater that requires inspections and maintenance and so does the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District.
When you say, I just wanna make sure we've got, we're clear on that, that, so there's a, what I'm hearing is there is a statutory requirement through the stormwater process that we are maintaining and that there is an audit to make sure that that is being maintained. Um, the, the, the party that's act, and so, and that's, am I right that that's a City of Forest Lake responsibility?
It is.
Because it's our permit, right?
Correct.
So who actually does the work? Do we contract that? Is that a public works, is that our stormwater tech? We're talking about higher rate, right?
The city does all of the inspection. Um, when it comes to maintenance, at least with the pond cleaning projects that we've done over the last handful of years, those are contracted out. Um, some general maintenance probably could be handled by public works, but I don't wanna speak for Dave on that.
Understood, understood. And can we define maintenance a little bit? Uh, the, what, what does that typically look like for, for that maintenance? I, my guess is that it is not weekly mowing, but so, but what is, what is that? What does that maintenance entail?
Yeah, correct. And I've got some, um, some notes here too that we can talk from. You know, the, the, the frequency of the maintenance, um, the, of the inspection and the maintenance varies based on the type of practice that you have. Uh, and then the, the duration of that maintenance or the life cycle of the, of the project itself is variable depending on the type of feature that you have. A wet pond is different than a, than a biofilter, which is what's being installed now. Um, so the, the, the maintenance, generally speaking, in the first couple of years is vegetation management. The filter itself stays in really good shape for the first, you know, handful of years. Ideally, we want that filter to stay fully functioning forever, um, without any maintenance. You know, that's the ideal circumstance, um, but that's not reality. There's very dirty sediment-laden water that comes into those filters and so, um, the vegetation maintenance for the first handful of years is to mow that twice, that helps keep the native, oop, keep the native species healthy and the roots deep. Um, the deep roots help with, with infiltration through the sand filter. Um, but really the plane of, the plane of failure, if you will, with these features is right at the surface. So as new sediment comes in and starts to plug the surface, um, it can diminish the amount of infiltration that happens down to the drain tile. So to fix that, um, we typically will go out and, and scarify the surface with a rake, break that part up. Sometimes you have to replace the top couple of inches of sediment and then re-vegetate. Um, there are some, you know, maintenance activities that may happen in the five to ten-year range, um, that include that. The frequency of that maintenance, of course, is completely dependent upon the finished construction, the constructed product and then also the, the, the health of the water coming into it.
Understood, understood, okay.
The, the typical life cycle for something like this is thirty years, just to put that full timeline into perspective. That makes it that much more challenging then to determine what the maintenance costs are for the developer and how long those, those durations last. A thirty-year maintenance cycle with annual maintenance could be very, very expensive. Um, and so depending on how that goes and, and usually you can adjust your, your maintenance plan based on the function of that, of that feature in the first couple of years.
Understood.
Um, this is, this is my last slide, Ed. We can go into questions, I just wanted to give an, an update on schedule. Um, our substantial completion date for the contractor has come and gone, um, due to rain delays and other, other issues with utilities. Um, we are currently working with the contractor right now to update his schedule. Uh, we are holding him currently to the October twentieth completion date, uh, but that may get moved depending on, um, the schedule delivered by the contractor. So we'll be working with him.
Can, can you speak to, kind of given, given your, given your assessment of kind of where we sit today, can you speak to, are we on, if we don't do, if we don't do anything different from a requirement standpoint, um, are, are we on track to, are, are, is, is the, is the, how, how close is the current state to what you expect it to look like when we're done? And I guess, could you maybe speak to like, some of the known deficiencies, like- Like, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to vet through, kind of get through the list of what are the construction project issues versus what are the design issues? Because I think those are two different things.
Yeah.
And just trying to, kind of, level set on, kind of, what's still on the known yes-to-do list versus what are some things that are maybe more problematic from an overall design?
Yeah, I think most of, most of four features are still under heavy construction. There are seven total. So that kind of puts that into perspective. We did hear from the contractor this morning that they hired a sub to get the work done faster. So they have brought in another set of, of hands to help with that project. So we're hoping to see some acceleration. You know, grading is going to continue through the week, likely into next, and then restoration will happen after that. That is, that is word from the contractor as of, as of yesterday, or I'm sorry, as of this morning. And so, would, having that, that subcontractor coming in should really help accelerate the process, the project. I'd, I'd rather not speak completely to schedule until we have that. Unfortunately, I just don't have it with, I don't have it yet. But we are really still pushing the contractor to be done on October twentieth. But that, that is, that is rapidly approaching, and it seems like there's a lot left.
Understood.
Yes, so, just, there are, most of the, most of four ponds are still left to be constructed, largely because the gas line was just moved today. So basin four had not been started. That's at the end, too, where everything else drains. So it's really challenging to, to not be able to build that one and everything upstream because drainage, positive drainage through construction is, is important.
So you said four of seven, we're, kind of, four of seven are still open or not-
Correct.
Not completed. And then, overall performance right now, how current, you know, we have, have had some recent rain events. How close are we from our current state of, kind of, the finality of that? Is it, is there a lot, going to be a lot of improvement in the coming weeks based on the work to be done? Of how quickly water's moving through? Or I sense that there's some frustration with current kind of water retention and what's out there? And I'm just trying to understand, is that a design issue or is that a because we're still in construction mode issue?
It's, it's a little bit because we're still in construction mode. You know, it's the, it's the messiest time of construction when those basins are fully open. I know that on the Dahlbeck property, the, the sand has to be brought up, still to finish grade. You know, and, and, and then the other features have the same, you know, the same issue. There's one, there's one basin in there that really won't have drain tile at all. It's meant to just be flow-through. But I understand that everything is very deep at the moment.
Underst-, understood.
Are there any contract penalties for being late on the project at all?
There can be.
Maybe that's already implemented or written into the contract, right?
Ryan, do you want to chime in there?
Mayor City Council, all the contracts that the city executes do have liquidated damages in them. I'm sure the city attorney could chime in on how difficult it is to obtain that stuff, but it is something that we use and leverage. Now, obviously, this is a project that has some delays that are unavoidable for the contractor of some private stuff that's been in the, the public right-of-way that's not even to be able to mark until you, you find it, right? So, you know, there's some of those situations that would be in the favor of the contract, and then there's some other things that's, you know, would be in the favor of the city. And then, you know, you just go through that discussion points and, you know, you got to get the contractor to really want to, obviously, agree with the terms that are agreed upon. Otherwise, if it does go to litigation or courts, it's usually not a win-win for both parties. So that's, that's the balance you, you play unless you have something proven that you, you have lost this much, you know. You know, easiest one would be, say, if you had a gas station on the corner, right? And you cut off access, they could specifically show you my till was this, 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 and this, you know, for a long period of time, and I have a track record now. You, you could easily justify something that's, you know, that broken down in the numbers. And in this case, it's going to be more of, you know, what's negotiated and what both parties would agree to, to minimize stuff on the backside of things. But it's definitely, obviously, in the contracts and we've, we've, we're threatening it right now in other jobs. But then, we're also then consuming Dave's time, my time, other people's times because we're constantly arguing and negotiating on the backside of things.
Well, thanks for the answer, at least, at least it's, it's out there. So it does, has to be somewhat of an incentive.
Yeah.
You know, and it sounds like there's lots of things to be done there yet. So hopefully, things will change a little bit and get better there.
It was, it was motivating, at least, to hear that they had hired a sub to, to help out.
Right.
So I, you know, again, until we know what that, what that rewritten schedule looks like, we're not quite sure if the twentieth is, is reality, but that liquidated damages is certainly there if we need it. And, you know, those, those schedules are, are currently under discussion with the contractor.
Just, I, I, just, I, just real quick on that point. I, I'm not sensing though, from, nobody loves the delay and nobody loves a project delay, but I'm not sensing from the room that the concern is as much the timeline than the what. So I'd rather us take the time to get to the right end result than just add more gas and fire onto the contractor to hurry up and get it done because I don't think hurry's going to help the situation. Again, nobody loves a longer project, but we're already in October. And so, I'd rather us take the time to get it right, Councilmember Roberts.
I agree, that's the least of our concerns, or anyone's concerns right now, the timing of this thing. I mean, it'll eventually get done. Just a, a question and then some comments. I recall asking the question at that May twenty-second meeting about the discharge to the lake that is directly, well, to the, what would be the south of two thirty-third. I know the property across the street, there is a pool, an abandoned pool that's there. I've been on site, I tried to find it, and, and the residents' claims and, and contacting the contractor, there is not a discharge there, is there? Or is there not a discharge that's listed that is, that was pictured in the first presentation we got in May?
Yes, I can absolutely clarify that. So that orange line that you see in that came from the original study. That was back, that was from the city's GIS. So we have GIS mapping of utilities, that culvert was there. It was verified during survey soon in twenty-two, I believe, when we went out to collect survey information, that that culvert does not exist. The culvert goes underneath two thirty-third to the north, and then into a previous ditch. There are two concrete flumes that come off of two thirty-third. Both of those discharge points end up in the same location. There's a wetland complex to the east of North Shore Trail, and the culvert goes under North Shore Trail to the, to the west into the lake.
So, I, just a couple of comments for me personally. First off, I want to apologize to everyone that's been affected by this. This was one of the first decisions I made on the city council, makes no excuse at all, but we did you a disservice. We should have asked, I should have asked more questions, better questions, to avoid where we're at. When you hear term, terms of shallow depressions and that, in my mind, I'm thinking of just really what we're trying to achieve. And I think it's forward-thinking for the city to try to figure out places that we can handle this, again, requirements of the watershed district, so that we can develop different areas, revolve downtown. But this, this is just, it's, it's, it's too much. It's too deep. I remember Councilmember Erickson asking the question that evening as well. Does this, does this get us to require the, the full amount of downtown, and it doesn't? And I think, personally, I want to see a step back where we can make the neighbors, neighborhood look as good as it can, like, not like it was, but then also accommodate some, some water, some development for downtown. So I don't know how that we get there, but I think we at least owe the, at least owe this to the neighborhood to at least explore how we can back up just a bit and make it so we're still getting some credits for development, but not destroying the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would echo Councilmember Roberts' comments. I, I walked that property, I walked this project here at the invitation of the property owners, and, I mean, it's just, I would not want to live there. I mean, I, I don't even think it's safe to drive by there. Like, that basin in Sering's Yard is enormous. And I don't think anybody understood how that property's even used. Because if you look across the street to, you know, on the other side of two hundred and thirty-third, his neighbors across the street don't even have a visual of North Shore. They don't have a lake lot. That enormous basin could have been built across the street and accomplished conceivably the same thing because all the water runs that way anyway. I mean, we could shrink his significantly, which would still allow him to actually use the land the way they had been using it largely, which, you know, I think is an absolute must as, on the backside of this thing. The other thing I'm concerned about is how close that basin comes to the road shoulder. You can see in the pictures. I mean, it is, and there's a massive concrete culvert with a metal grate over it that, you know, my understanding is that Public Works moved the street sign years ago because it kept getting taken out. That concrete's not going to get taken out, the driver is. And so, I mean, that's, that's just a huge miss in my, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know these things are designed, but that's a huge safety, safety issue. We've, yeah, we've got to take steps to make this project more palatable to the neighborhood. And it's still, trying to accomplish some of the things we did, but let's do it with the understanding of how do these property owners actually use their property? So we can, you know, all have a favorable outcome.
And, and I can appreciate the, the communication that was supposedly had or not. But in, in a project this going forward for the city, I think we, we need to bring the neighborhood in and say, okay, this is what we want to do. This is what is proposed, what are your thoughts? Instead of just all of a sudden telling them what's going to happen, and then try to back off from that. Well, it, it's unlikely maybe some of that even happened because I would assume most of these people would have been here shortly after that May twenty, twenty-second meeting to say, well, wait a minute, what's going on? And then the fact that utilities, they're learning from this from utility companies, another miss on our, on our part.
Yeah, I echo some of the comments that have been made, and really, this is part of a community like Forest Lake. It's got to be part of the future, and we need to be good at it. Not just like, okay, but it needs to be okay. It can't be a, we're picking winners and losers and this is downtown over neighborhoods. Like, that wasn't the intent, the, and I, I, I don't know what happened from the original design and the original thought of shallow basins. And I appreciate that the project's going to be optimized, we need to hit a certain threshold. But I think that's where we have an opportunity as council to come back and say, maybe we're trying to make it do too much and at the cost of property owners and things that were unintended. And let's take the time to get it right, if that means some less credits. I'm not sure what that, where that math falls and what might be some lower-hanging fruit to make that happen. But I, I think we need to, like, while there's time to, I think the worst thing we could do is just call it finished. Let's, let's find what's reasonable. Because what I'm not hearing is no project. I'm hearing some support for the project. And there's, I know there's support, and some of it was expressed tonight, for quality of the lake. And I, I know people that that is important, and people under, seem to have some understanding. It is right-of-way. And I think if we got something that was closer to shallow depressions and a rain garden, I think there's some support for some of that. I think there's, you know, in the design and execution. In my, in my mind, anything over four feet that is long-term, it starts to get challenging on. To me, that's bigger than a ditch or something that you would expect to be along a roadway.
The project has to get done right, but I disagree with the fact there isn't some sort of a timeline here. There is, it's called winter, and it's coming up very shortly. And so this project has to get done, whether it's the twentieth of October or whatever, it has to get done right. But there is a timeline. And so to say that there isn't is not, in my mind, doesn't work. So, got to try to find some solutions. Maybe there's some things that'll change along the way, but let's get it done right, and maybe we can change some things too.
And I echo Mayor Bain's comments in that. I think, as we've all heard, that there is support for the project. And I think there, it doesn't have to be, like, this picture here, it's just right to my right, and that is so deep. And that is scary, and like what Councilmember Erickson said, that is so close to the shoulder as well. So there's safety concerns, and I think we could find some sort of middle ground of trying to make it more shallow, make it more palatable for everyone. And I don't know if it's possible to try to get to that point and then maybe have some sort of open house of how, or bring people back and have more of a conversation again of how we can get there. But I'd like to be optimistic in that we can get there.
Do you feel, it sounds like you're on a first-name basis with many of the property owners already. Do you feel like you have enough information with direction of, okay, let's come back with some additional plans? Like, what's the best mode? Because I, Councilmember Husnix Point, winter is coming, like, you know, and once things freeze over, I can't imagine things get easier. What is a path, we can't go back in, like, fresh, like, you know, workshop, but seems like there's already some, lots of conversations that have already taken place. There's already, you know, open lines of communication. Do you have a sense of what's salvageable here yet this season? Or what that might look like? Or how do we, what's our mess, next step to kind of meet residents where they are and come up with some updates?
Yeah, I've, I've been thinking a lot about it. And, you know, the, we do have some four-to-one slopes. I, I would say that we can shallow up the three-to-one slopes to four-to-ones for sure, so that they're much more comfortable to mow. I understand that some of the bigger, deeper features could be filled in at least, you know, on the deepest points, and those grades shallowed out. That would include importing some new topsoil to fix those slopes, and then filling in with more sand. We want to make sure they drain. So if we leave any sort of depression out there for water quality that has to be below the structure outlet, we want to make sure that the depth of sand is still adequate to drain fast. So that might include, you know, adding more drain tile or adding larger drain tile, depending on what those features look like. So I just want to, you know, set the stage for what materials would be needed to, for those fixes. But the, the benefit here is that, you know, that with some topsoiling and some additional sand, we can both shallow up the slopes and fill the features. You're just, you're, you, every time, you know, you lose that, that volume, and you, I think everybody understands that. So it, you know, if that's the direction, we can certainly move towards some additional concepts here, at least to, to get a night, get a feel for what could be done.
One, one question, kind of, topic and theme is just kind of safety. So are there some things we can, I, I worried over the weekend and since I saw the pictures of the, you know, large hole right next to the, I mean, we are, somebody having a bad night of driving away from that. Because are there some interim construction things we can do to make that more safe? I'm expecting that that is not final design, that that is a temporary construction.
That, that is correct, that is not final design.
Can we do something in the meantime? I, I have worried about that since I saw that photo.
Yeah, I think more substantial barricades. I'm not a, I'm not a traffic control expert. Ryan might have some, some additional opinions there. But I know that we've been working with the contractor on some different traffic control items too through all construction.
Also, I mean, I, I think it should be said out loud, the final design, I mean, we have, we have roadway standards around what is acceptable, around the depth, and what is needed for barriers, or at what, at what level would you need a barrier? Can, can, Ryan, can you just talk about kind of what some of those standards are and how we are, what we will be looking for when we decide that that final design is safe for roadway traffic?
Mayor City Council, I drove by there earlier this evening. I don't know if they were still working or not, but probably a trench that shouldn't have been left the way you normally would want to leave something. It looks like it was fully excavated and then just, they, they left, right? And, yeah, that ditch was very close, just west of Hayward. So that obviously is something that's, needs to be addressed and to stop anything that, it either has to get filled up or blocked off with a jersey barrier, what should have been probably done there. Or even parking tobacco over the top of it, you know, so that way, nothing could get down into it. So we'll have to look at that. But at the end of the day, the three-to-ones are perfectly fine on a road standard, especially a road that's, you know, posted at thirty miles an hour. Obviously, four-to-one's better, but the, you know, that would meet road requirements, but I don't think the road requirements are going to be the weightlifter here versus what's going to be, at the end of the day, acceptable to the property owners.
Quick question, I mean, as we've talked about road construction and North Shore being top of mind, how does this project play into that? Because we've eaten up a lot of that right-of-way in these areas. What's that look like for road construction?
So, right-of-way from Greenway to, all along North Shore to Highway ninety-seven, there's very few areas that actually have platted right-of-way. This is one of the areas that actually has dedicated platted right-of-way because of the plat that came in with the subdivision work. So as you meander north or south through this area, you start running into areas that are just, you know, out to the middle of the road and, you know, prescriptive easements and stuff like that. So, road work that is planned in the CIP, that's been estimated and submitted a few, couple of years ago now for this portion, would be just majority of payment replacements. And I know there's been some talk also then, well, we want a trail too, right? But there's not dedicated right-of-way for a trail. But you can see some of the things that people may not want in their yard. But then if we bring a trail, that's going to be a lot wider footprints, you know, and relocating a lot of above-ground stuff, like power pole lines and stuff like that too. So- So what's in your budgets for North Shore from Greenway to Highway ninety-seven is full pavement replacement and obviously any storm culverts, any sanitary sewer repairs would be completed too at that same time, signage, striping. Now, what we can do, we, the, the plan is to keep the same footprints. We can look at the potential striping of the road widths now that it's a thirty mile an hour road and majority of it thirty-five and the other portion. So potentially we can go a little narrower on the striping of the road. Sometimes people, some say that provides a traffic calming effect, they drive slower. But we can look at shifting the striping too. Maybe you get one wider shoulder on one side of the road versus the other. Now you have a little wider safer area for pedestrians to use that shoulder along there. But then in your CIP too, from Greenway back to sixty-one on North Shore, that's a full recon. That's going to take a lot of public engagements. And you see where it sits now, that project should probably already be talking to those people now because again, there's areas in there that don't have right of way dedicated fully. And there's going to be really big impacts. And at times they won't even be able to drive through there. So that's why it's planned out like the CIP is because, you know, allows you, the more time we get momentum on a project, it allows us to be better at public engagements, scheduling, budgeting, and chasing other funding to buy down those project costs.
Any other questions, points of clarification, feedback?
Any, obviously any change to this is going to be additional funds for the city, correct? And, and how does, where does that budget come from and how do we? That, that, I guess that's a question, can't be, doubt can be answered today, but that, even though it's a concern of mine, I just think it, we need to spend those dollars to make this right.
Any, any sort of redesign will include a cost estimate.
And then the other question, you know, and I know Councilman Husnix concerned about the, the timing and winter and that, but if there is a redesign in that, I mean, how realistic is this to get this done in this construction season?
You know, I would say that, that the excavation is done, so our frozen ground conditions are essentially mitigated already. You know, so, so backfilling with the native material that's out there before it gets too cold is, is, is a positive thing. But the, the piece that may need to wait until spring would just be final restoration. So final placement of sod and seed. Ryan, from a construction perspective, does that make sense?
Councilmember Roberts, to answer your question, there's, could be a couple of ways we could go with this. We could let the contractor finish the scope of the work the best that we can to kind of get it to winter and call it a day with his contract. There's a reason they're bringing in a sub. Obviously, we would be under the threshold of state public bid process, so we could actually just go out and get quotes with contractors we would want to select to finish any revisions or finish the project entirety come next spring. So those are things that we're obviously going to probably want to talk at a staff level very quickly tomorrow, what our best path would be. Obviously, safety in mind, but just know that's, we might not have the exact answer that the residents might want this week, but what I just laid out will take some time, but I think in the long run, it might be the best thing for the city to do something more like else that pathway.
So I, I would say if, if this comes back as the as-built not being the way it was supposed to be, it's a no-brainer, you find a new contractor, right? That seems to be the, I would think, because I'm hearing that there's, this is part of the issue or maybe potentially why we're at where we're at right now is, is, is the contractor that was hired.
I don't want to personally speculate to that, but kind of would defer back to staff's been managing this day to day and can appreciate, and we'll look forward to kind of what that recommendation is, is if there is, I do think we should hold our current contractor to as much as what has been committed at least for, you know, major design. But if the recommendation is to go a different path for some of the updates, I can appreciate why that might happen and understand that that's probably part of your conversation of coming up.
Yes.
We didn't have this on an agenda item for a specific action, but really it was, just want to make sure we're being clear on what the request is of staff. It, it sounds like, if I can just summarize, so it sounds like we are asking you to come back with some recommendations for project updates and possibly, you know, some additional evaluation of where the project is to current standards and then to look at those standards and just see as those have materialized in the project of what we now know. Are there some updates that might impact the overall kind of goals of the project? And bring that back to council with some cost estimates, some timing, and then also an understanding of what does the mean for the overall goal of the project being, kind of what does that mean for a project for a downtown storm water management solution? Does that, like, kind of capture that direction clearly? Ryan, Tim, as you hear that, questions you have of us?
I think that, that feels straightforward from, from my perspective.
Okay. Very good. Well, I appreciate the residents that came here this evening to speak. I know it's not pleasant to, to the public open house and, or open speaking, but appreciate you being here. We don't have final answers for you this night, tonight, but hopefully you have some ideas to just council's perspective and the direction we've given and just what we're trying to get to for resolution. So you are welcome to stay for our entire meeting this evening if you wanted to. I appreciate that you may have other plans for the night. You are welcome to leave as well. So thank you for being here. We'll take just a moment, council. Yeah, thank you so much. Counsel, for your consideration this evening, we have our consent agenda, consent agenda items six A through six I. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
I'd make a motion that we approve consent agenda A, seven A through I.
I'll second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and our consent agenda is approved. That brings, moves us on to item eight A, resolution ten-nine-two-three-zero-one, which is the Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision. And Abby, I believe you are walking us through this?
Yeah. Abby, while you're getting transitioned, just a quick note, Patrick had a family emergency and had to leave out of town. So hence he is, was planning to be here, but late this afternoon had to leave, so.
Thank you, Mayor Bain, members of the council. Todd Christensen of Elm Craig Vista's LLC has petitioned to split the lot shown at the, on the screen there at the northeast corner of Highway sixty-one and two-hundred-and-second Street North, also known as County Road fifty. The new configuration design would create two almost identical equal parcels that would be accessed by a single access point off of County Road fifty. Both parcels are slated for future development. No development proposals are, been proposed at this time. Staff noted in this staff report, we've been in discussions with the county on this project. The county has not come out and directly supported the project, but they have indicated that they would prefer that the access point is on the property directly to the east, sixty-one-fifty, two-hundred-and-second Street North, which is the Shadow Creek Stables Estate property, which is not being proposed to be developed at this time. So as staff has noted in the staff report, the county further notes that access to the existing parcel and the future lot split may be permissible, but that the county may be required to put in a median along County Road fifty and restrict the access to a right-in, right-out in this location. As I allude to in, in my staff report, is the county is, is vague on that access. However, staff has written the resolution that supports the lot split, indicating that it would be up to the developer to obtain that access before we would release the deeds for this. Additionally, one of the approval conditions that staff is recommending is that we would allow for that temporary access point at this location in this time. But at the time that Shadow Creek Estates Stables does develop, those access points are combined into a single access point. So staff does believe that with certain conditions, this could be, or should be approved. I'll note that the Planning Commission did hold hearings on this matter. They took this matter into consideration and did approve, recommend approval of this. It was not a unanimous, unanimous vote, one dissenting vote on the Planning Commission. But again, staff is proposing that the Planning Commission, or excuse me, the City Council consider resolution ten-zero-nine-two-three-zero-one. I don't have it right in front of me, but it is approval of the Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision. And Todd Christensen of Elm Craig Vista's LLC is here. If you have questions for him, otherwise I'm available to answer questions as well.
Understood. Thank you, Abby. Mr. Christ, to the applicant, did you have anything planned that you wanted to present to council? Okay. Very good. Thank you. Abby, just, can you tee up? So tonight is minor subdivision. Can you just tee up where we are, based on where we are in this project? Should council approve this evening, what our next steps would look like?
Sure. If you approve this, this evening, the developer would have a few conditional approval items to work through entering into agreement with the city regarding that future right-of-way access we need to obtain easement. They would need to consult with the county to obtain access onto County Road fifty. They could do that now and, but we wouldn't release the deeds until that's done. Otherwise, what's more likely is a development proposal is going to come in for one of those future parcel sites. And then we go back through our site approval process that goes before the Planning Commission. So there'll, there'll be other types of planning zoning reviews and approvals that would come back before the city.
Understood. Thank you for that. Counsel, any questions that we might have of Abby or for the applicant?
I would just, Mr. Christensen, are you accepted of these, the requirements that they're asking? You're, you're okay with those?
Yes.
And the right-in, right-out idea from the county, that isn't a guaranteed idea or?
Right now, this is the county's access management plan. The county's access management plan does call for a right-in, right-out only. Both of those lining up across from the two undeveloped parcels to the east. So this is the parcel that we've just approved for a land swap with the county that we would obtain. The county is asking that the city would combine that access point into sixty-one-forty-one. They'd also ask that this subdivision would be combined with access to sixty-one-fifty, that those would line up. The developer and the city have been, city staff have been in conversations with the county about their, with county staff about their willingness to move those access points over. But it is likely that in the long run, Consulate Valento, that this will be a divided highway with right-in, right-out at both of those locations. Did that help answer your question?
Yeah, just my, I mean, my personal opinion, I would hate to see a right-in, right-out there. And on that road, obviously that's not up to me and that's up to the county. But I think congesting that area and that especially that intersection onto sixty-one is already extremely dangerous. So putting more vehicles, funneling more vehicles from County Road fifty onto Highway sixty-one, to me is not the best idea. I know that we're going to have development there and we've looked at developments a little bit to the east and the Shadow Creek to the north there. But then that comes out at good view to my remembrance. And so just more cars, again, funneling out onto sixty-one from there is, from a safety perspective, it's dangerous.
I will note for the record that the county, the county has heard those concerns from residents throughout these, these development review processes. County has done some preliminary analysis of the Highway sixty-one and County Road fifty intersection and are starting to look at whether or not that does warrant some sort of change, be that a signal or something even greater in the future. As the apartment or future, what we believe is going to be an apartment complex project on that western property comes forward, the city and the county can require traffic study to be done to determine whether or not that would be, there would be a negative impact to that intersection. But we wouldn't be looking at that at the time of a lot split. It would be at the time that actual use is proposed.
Yeah, there's been some benders on that intersection. Just about caught on it.
This is where though, I just think we need to continue to, it's always where traffic is always the chicken and egg of where you need the traffic to create those circumstances that, you know, cause the change. We aren't very good about, you know, kind of designing in advance. Because I just, it's challenging and it's to have more kind of traffic going through there.
I will note that is a county road, County Road fifty and a state highway. So we can definitely encourage those, you know, improvements in those locations. We've advised both bodies of our concerns, the local concerns, which is why additional analysis, I think, has been done by the county.
To not, yeah, right, but the, the development's coming, right? So to not support the development isn't the right idea. So I don't mean to imply that it's just challenging that. We don't do that in reverse, but. Any other comments or concerns on this particular item, questions?
No, Madam Mayor, make the motion to approve resolution ten-on-nine-two-three-zero-one, the Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion's approved. With that, we'll move to item eight B, which is a preapproval request for Caterpillar nine-twenty-six M Wheel Loader and Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for being here, gentlemen. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our budgets kind of line up screwy with state contracts where a lot of them, the contracts start and stop on different times of the year. If you recall, last year, the motor grader, that contract ended October thirtieth and then prices change. That, by pre-ordering that grader last year, it saved us approximately forty-five thousand dollars just by ordering before January first. So this is the same situation. It's budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. The contract ends on October thirtieth. No, no funds would be spent until twenty-twenty-four. It's basically just giving the approval to Caterpillar to start building that loader. Talking with the vendor, it's approximately ten percent they look at be going up for next year, so about twenty thousand dollars by ordering now versus waiting till January first. So basically, I'm just here tonight seeking approval for that, just to try to get ahead of that and try to save a few dollars.
Understood. Counsel, questions for day of follow-up items? This does obviously commit us to this purchase, but from my perspective or conversations, this hasn't been a question. So I appreciate staff looking ahead and looking for the preapproval to move it faster, but certainly want to make sure counsel has visibility to that. Any concerns? Anyone ready for a motion? I would move that we pre-approve the Caterpillar nine-twenty-six M Wheel Loader as presented by Dave.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our final item this evening is the Broadway Avenue Bridge lighting contract, which we have put on in the action item for this evening. We did get an update at a future, at a, our past workshop about just where we were in the project. In Patrick's absence, Dave, can you kind of walk us through the contract of what's been proposed?
Yeah, just to recap, I think it was the last workshop or last council meeting, it was still kind of undecided what we wanted to do here. And talking with the vendor, his kind of his drop dead date would be, you know, this week sometime to get us on the schedule. By November tenth would be when he wanted to put it up. So to give him three weeks or so to get permitting through the county, we kind of figured this meeting, if we can make a decision on, on what we wanted to do. I think on your agenda is for the one side, the only thing that changed is you will need to rent another aerial lift to try to string it up from both sides of the county without having to shut the road down. That was one thing that has changed. So I think it originally was about forty-eight hundred dollars and now it's. hundred dollars and now it's approximately fifty-six hundred dollars. So, that would be the, the one proposal. The second one, I don't have a quote for, but it would be approximately just a little over ten thousand dollars to do both sides with the support beams and cross beams.
So, the proposal in our packet, that is the five thousand, five seventy-eight, twenty-seven, is that, can you just describe what, what that means from a design standpoint?
Yep, I had attached a picture with it, but it's basically, it'd be a square around the, the bridge, so it'd be the bottom, both sides, and then the top rail.
So, it's the outline?
Yep.
Outline only, and on what side?
On both sides.
On both sides.
And then the, the higher-priced one or the option two would be the outline plus all the support beams, so then it would kind of be crisscrossed all the way through.
Am I not seeing the outline, the second one in my packet?
It's there.
Oh, it's not there, okay. So, are you giving us, sorry, maybe I'm behind, are you giving us two options?
Yep, if you look at the one with the outline, then just imagine all the support beams being lit up as well, so, and you can't see that either, I suppose.
We cannot.
It looks really good on my.
I.
See it? I just know there was some, some movement earlier that maybe that there might be a want to go with option two. I know at the last council was bring back a quote for option one, which was the outline, so I just, I didn't get, I didn't get a hold back of the vendor to send me an updated quote, but my, I think my quick math got it to just a little over ten thousand dollars, it was like eighty-six hundred dollars plus, eighty-nine hundred dollars plus another a thousand. So, it'd be about ten thousand for option two or fifty-six hundred for option one.
And the, the quote that's in our packet and then what, from what you're saying with the quote for the both side, or for the expanded option, is that of total cost beyond staff time? Are there, is there any other costs that are included?
The only staff time would be involved is plugging an extension cord into the lightbulb for him, so he just needs power supplied, so that would be just us giving him that cord.
This contract's pretty all-inclusive, then?
Yep.
Okay.
We, he did take out the storage, Public Works would have stored the lights at the end of the year at, at the public workshop, so that was whatever that was, four hundred dollars to save that, so.
Understood. So, knowing we need to make a decision, knowing that there is some sponsorship involved, but we kind of need to make this decision from a contracting standpoint, what are council's thoughts on options and decisions to move ahead?
Question, Dave, is there any city equipment or the lift, obviously, there must not be that, that they could use or to keep that cost down on the lift piece of it?
We have an aerial lift, but I would have to talk to Amanda or, see, I don't know if we can just give out our equipment for them, somebody else to use, especially that kind of equipment, it's just not like driving a pickup truck, it's a lot of, I think if you were to donate it, you'd have to donate staff too to operate it, and that in turn probably help them put the lights up if we're on the one side. I mean, I, there's a possibility, but then you're, you're almost doing it yourselves.
Then the other question, so we're, we're at five thousand dollars on sponsorships, is it possible that we could commit, obviously, if the timing really is about getting county approval and all that, regardless if they're going to do the full scope or just the outline, would there be a couple additional weeks, I wonder, to see if we can raise the full amount? Because there's, there's potential that could happen. I guess the question would then be to the vendor, like when, how soon does he need to order those extra lights? I guess that would probably be for him, what he'd have to plan.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak for the vendor, but I, I don't know what that, the timeout is, I don't know if he has a bunch in stock that it really doesn't matter, or if it's, you know, he's specifically ordering these lights for this project in that timeline. I, I would think that if we at least approved that we're going to do either option one or two, then that could be a conversation with him tomorrow, and I can report back at the workshop, you know, which way, if yes, you have another week or so to think about, or you can see where we're at next Monday with funds and if we're farther ahead, but I don't want to speak for him, I would think that at least if you tell him yes, put us on the books to do the work, that could buy us some more time, but I definitely can reach out to him and talk to him about it.
I like that option of, so just in terms of being clear on sequencing, Cons member Roberts, are you suggesting that we would approve tonight option one, give staff some direction to see what our timeline would be to like upgrade our contract to option two, and then if there were time, depending on where we're ending up with overall sponsorships, at least have that as an, as an option to increase it? I, I like, it seems like it's low risk, right? If those sponsorships don't come through, then we just don't move ahead, contractor's not committed, but we do have an option. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah. I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding. Dave, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yep, I think if this is approved, this, this quote, I'll work with him and then figure out timelines of what he needs to know for a final decision, but at least that can give him the go-ahead to work with the, for the right-of-way permit and all that, so at least he can get going on that, and that'll be taken care of, because like Cons member Roberts says, a right-of-way permit won't change between option one or two, they'll still be doing the same work.
Understood. Anyone ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve option one, the fifty-six hundred, close to Broadway Avenue Bridge Lighting.
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I guess I just want it noted for the record that we are considering option two, but tonight, the approval is for option one, and just wanted to have that on the table, so, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and motion carries. We do not have any planned workshop topics for this evening, which can move us right into staff updates, and Karen.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, I don't have any updates this evening.
Very good, thank you, Abby.
Thank you, Mayor Bay and members of the council, I am not sure if we reported that we've set our hometown holiday date for the first Friday in December, December first, to mark calendars, I think the council's usually there to do the actual tree letting, but this year it'll be a single event on that Friday evening, I don't remember the specific time, but late afternoon to early evening. We won't be doing that subsequent event at City Hall, but really trying to make it more of a festival outdoor event, so, yeah, just note that for the record.
Excellent, and you said December first, correct?
Yes, the first Friday in December, December first.
Excellent, thank you. That is unusual for us to do a Friday evening, can we just make sure we hit the communication extra hard?
Yep.
Are we calling typically a Sunday each, has it typically been a Sunday night?
It's typically been a Saturday.
Oh, Saturday, okay.
And with two events, kind of one here at City Hall during the day and then at dusk, kind of going at the tree, and really, we thought that a single event, maybe right after work in the evening before, you know, a weekend, that we might actually garner a little bit more traffic.
I love the idea of a Friday night event, let's just hit communication extra hard, people, creatures of habit.
Sure.
Amanda.
No updates, Your Honor.
Very good. Dave?
Just one update, the compost site is now open for fall hours starting this weekend, so now it'll be open Saturdays, Sundays, Mondays and Wednesdays from now until the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, unless we get a lot of snow before that, which I hope we don't, so. All the hours are on the website, Karen sent out an email last, it's right on the front page, so, and the hours are at the site too on the reader board, so. There may be, with that new Washington County site coming in, the hazardous waste, there may be a few days in there where the site may be closed down. We will use our reader boards to announce it, it's been relayed to that contractor, it's imperative, we know at least a week out from when that's going to happen, and then we can just direct people to the Washington County site, down on One Seventieth at that point, but they figured it'll maybe be a two or three days to get, get through that site and through that driveway, because even if, the road will be closed down going in there, so we'll also coordinate with Twin Cities Dock too, so they'll know they can't get in and out of there at that point in time too, so I'll keep you posted on that, or we'll keep everyone posted, plus do some major letting of people know, because it's, unfortunately, it's going to be right at, at the peak time of our site, so, that's it.
Thank you, Dave. Ryan?
Mayor City Council, just friendly reminder, a long time previously ago, we said that the county would be at the workshop this coming Monday on the sixteenth, to present about basically the justification of how they got to the project. Less than two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the county and the mayor and Cons member Erickson, city staff, and there was a direction to pursue some other funding mechanisms and look at other alternatives for that, that roadway connection. The county's still in the process of setting up those two property owner meetings for us to fulfill that step of that, and then also with the, Thursday I have a meeting, we'll go over the grant opportunity, the local road improvement program, previously we were successful in getting that, that's how we built the roundabout at Fenway in the south leg of the Parkway that was left, so that would be the same grant opportunity we'd be chasing. I think we got a great story here with the, the partner of the county, but you also bringing the school district and all the other concerned residents here, so we'll probably have a lot of support letters for that, but just know in the next couple months, there will be some requests of you guys to, a resolution of support on some of that stuff, that's normal practice on those grant submittals, and we would want to line that up with any bonding bill money, that would be also being chased here too, so. So, just heads up on that, working on that stuff, and then based on that conversation we had in the room with all the representatives and what our next steps with that are going to be, County stated Highway thirty-three or Everton Avenue, that's going to be going out for bid here, probably into November, December-ish, so they would know our contractor shortly, probably January, I don't know how long between county bid opening and it goes to actual board, but for sure, February of two thousand and twenty-four already, they would know the contractor and then probably starts, I know some private utility work has been going on already out there with that project, so if you've seen some things moving around, trying to work within their schedules, so that's what's going on with that one.
Thank you. Chief Newman?
No updates.
Very good. Kevin?
No updates.
All right, very good. Start with council updates, I'll start with Cons member Roberts.
No, no updates, just a, a comment, I, I know this, this evening, I think, was, was good, have the public come, and I know that Bolton and May took a lot of the heat of this thing, but, you know, you guys were given marching orders whenever and you did it, you know, and so it's, it's, we're coming, coming back on this thing, so it's, it's, you know, I think the council has to take ownership on that, and any comments that the residents have had with me about any staff from Bolton and May, it's been all positive for the most part.
Agreed.
And we will adjust accordingly too, so just with that, we're already going to have a meeting in the morning about this project, obviously, but following that right after, on the consent agenda was the two thousand and four local street improvement project, we'll start already coordinating with that, even though it's a little more of a maintenance type of a project, but this, we want to adjust to what you guys want, if you guys want better public engagement, we certainly would do that. You know, on the North Shore Circle, we had several open houses, well attended by the residents, and we painted the picture ugly for them, and I think maybe that's why that one probably went so well on that perspective, we showed pictures and did presentations, and this is what it's going to be like during construction. So, when it happened, there was no surprises, and that stuff that we can do, it just takes time, and if we have the time, we certainly can do that.
Appreciate that, and we need to start being more specific, that that is what we want, and this one was.
And the dialogue between us two, whether it's Public Works or Engineering, don't hesitate to ask questions, sometimes we might assume you guys might know a term or a knowledge or, you know, a definition of something, and we just take it for granted because it's in our day-to-day wheelhouse, and obviously, we need to close that gap on stuff, and that, we'll take ownership of that.
Understood, thank you. Really appreciate Tim being here as well, I know he spent some time after the meeting with residents, and just really appreciate his work. Cons member Valento?
Nothing from me tonight.
Cons member Husnick?
Yeah, I attended the EDA meeting this evening before the council meeting, and we talked about several things, including some analysis of what we're looking for for the city of Forest Lake, and I'm sure you'll expand on that, so, and then I attended the city, the Forest Lake Area Schools Board Meeting last Thursday, and kind of the notable thing that happened that particular evening was that the Holberg family donated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new Zamboni there. So, it's a big deal, and then they, all together with the Tefla thing and some other donations, they collected about a hundred and sixty, two thousand dollars total, so lots of good recommend, lots of good donations, and then they talked about one retirement that occurred, rest of them is just, you know, they do their reports, their workshops and that kind of thing, so that's pretty much it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cons member Husnick. Cons member Erickson?
No new updates.
All right, very good. Just two quick updates for me, as Ryan had mentioned, Cons member Erickson and I attended a meeting with city staff, county staff, as well as Washington County Commissioner Fran Miran, just to really circle back on what, what kind of our updated tactical next steps are related to the city, or the county highway project, and then specifically the impact on Forest Road. So, really appreciate having everybody at the table, appreciate Cons member, or Commissioner Miran's leadership on that topic. We have runway on that project, and so let's get it right, rather than just trying to get a project done, and so there's a number of options, of course, finding the funding is never the easy part, but again, we have some timing and some different options and some compelling stories, so really appreciate the county's leadership and assistance on that, and city staff's assistance in supporting it as well. And then tonight's EDA meeting, as Cons member Husnick mentioned, we walked through a SWOT analysis, appreciate Chris Eng from Washington County leading us through that, and that is kind of the tee-up to us doing an update of the work plan, we typically in the EDA are working in three-year work plan cycles, and this is us preparing for another three-year work plan update, so great conversation, we went almost right up until seven o'clock this evening, and look forward to another good work, working session in our next meeting. With that, that's the end of our planned agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I won't.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.